Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you very much for all being here, taking a little bit of time out of your life. Anybody that's online, thank you for joining us virtually. I would like to call our Surrey Police Board meeting to order, call our meeting to order, declare any, give an opportunity for any of our directors to declare any conflicts of interest. Adoptions and adoption of the agenda, just as I speak with, we adopt the agenda. Understand there are three consent items that are, that are good to go. If anybody has any discussions, we can, we can adjust those as, as cool. So it'll be an adopt the agenda for June 12th, 2025. In favor? Adoption of minutes, May 15th, 2025. Okay, thank you. And we are moving along into presentations and I will turn that over to Chief Lapins.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone. The presentation today is about the 2025 strategic plan. Little bit of background, this plan was put together by the previous board, in fact, the administrator last year. And so it entails three pillars, our people, our organization and our community. Materials that you have explains it in detail of half-year update, but what I'd like to do this evening is just to give you a little bit of a slideshow and just some of the highlights of all the material that you have. We'll start off with the first priority, which is our people and Deputy Matsumoto will make a few remarks and then we'll move on to the next one.
Great. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Under priority number one, our people, we have three items that we're tracking as developed, as the chief said, by our previous board administrator. So the first one is about developing a recruiting plan, recruiting hiring plan according to budget allocations, and this speaks to our new recruit hiring plans. As I think most people know, all municipal police departments in B C send their new police officer recruits to the Justice Institute, British Columbia Police Academy, and there are three intakes every year and there are three graduations every year and following graduations. These are police officers that then come into security service and they are ready to deploy into their assignments, which for the most part will be in patrol. So for 2025, we have three intakes. In January, we had 13 seats that we filled, in May, we had 11 seats that we filled, and in September of this year, we have been allocated 18 seats and our recruiting team is moving very quickly to identifying all 18 recruits for that time period. The second item that we're tracking under our people, sorry, still going along on the developing hiring plan, is our experienced officer hires. Just talked about recruits, want to talk about experienced officer hiring. So overall, S P S has two streams of police officer hiring, we have new recruits that just talked about, and we have our experienced officer. So we have met all of our experienced officer hirings year to date. We have five hiring onboarding throughout the year. Most of them are coinciding with the graduation periods of our new recruit again to provide a tranche of new police officers to the road as we move into other districts. So for the first three onboarding intakes, January, March and June, like as I said, we met our targets, we're averaging about 28 experienced officer hires per session, and we're looking for another 28 or so for the next session, and we're on our way to meeting that. But as, as you know, we've released recently, just the other day, hiring incentives, and that's because we are considerably estimating our number of experienced officers that we're going to be able to attain. So we need something to bolster our interest in applicants to S P S. The last thing I want to talk about under recruiting is developing our civilian hiring plan. Again, it's, it's a hiring plan that's developed in accordance with budget allocation. So happy to announce that all of our civilian staff that transitioned over out of our C N P's board services about S P S, we have about 140 civilian vacancies that we'll attempt to hire over 2025. A number of those positions are filled right now, but they're filled with auxiliary staff, and we need to identify a full-time employees to take on those roles. The one sort of area that we're working very closely with the R C M P has to do with security clearances. So there are a number of civilian roles in S P S that support both the police service and the R C M P that are policing in the other districts in Surrey. And because of that, the civilian staff require security clearances from both agencies. So just, it's much easier for S P S to clear because we have a lower number of staff to clear, and some of the staff are paused, waiting to go into their jobs until they obtain their R C M security clearance as well. So as I said, we're working with the R C M P to try and get that process exp. So under priority one, we have our second category of training. I'll talk about three areas quickly under training. Following the same thing, we want to deliver civilian onboard training program. Most of our training prior to 29th has been focused on a police officer training for obvious reasons of use of force qualifications and all the number of training pieces that our police officers from all over Canada have to come to, to do so they align what we want to achieve here in Surrey. We're now turning our focus to civilian staff, building out some of the sort of I T architecture, learning management system architecture that we need to change to incorporate the civilian roles into that. But we are nonetheless delivering civilian training. We just ran through a leadership training program defined specifically for our civilian managers. We also want to refine and improve supervisor leadership courses, an area that's very important to S P S, leadership training across all of our, both sworn and civilian thoughts of the house, as I mentioned, civilians just went through a course. And so we have had in place for some time sort of a fundamental non-commissioned officer course for our frontline supervisors. We've now built enhancements and will be offering a full sum leadership development program with phase two, which is a four-day course that's going to start in 2026. So that will be the full sum complete leadership development program for police officers. And then the last training program I wish to bring to your attention, Mr. Chair, is a development enhancement of the multi-level investigative development. So they call this the enhanced investigator skill program. There are four levels, 100 level, two, three, and so forth, and it seeks to bring our more junior patrol-centric members into the realm of going into a skill set of more advanced investigations. We teach things like trauma-informed practices, risk affect decision-making, survivor-client, the community approach, and through all levels of these courses are ingrained major course management principles, which is the model that all police agencies in British Columbia work under. The last stream I want to talk about under priority one is wellness. And we are embarking on or have been dealing with researching both national and international best practices. So when we started and stood up S P S in the early days, we, we tossed together a wellness program that was effective, but it was thrown together fairly quick to meet the needs that we had at the time. But now that we're a much larger organization, we are turning our minds to researching, like I said, national and international best practices. We're going to be looking at a critical incident Africa program. Again, that exists, we're enhancing that policy, finding that policy based on our experiences over the last three or four years. Part of that policy and practice will involve a reintegration program, which is very important for our police officers and civilian staff that have gone through a critical incident. But we are also interfacing this with an overall bound posture for S P S. It can't just live in a single unit or a single section. This is a posture that permeates all of S P S activities. As such, we have identified, contract with in some cases, experts, healthcare experts in fields such as dietitian services, fitness coordinators, preventative health services and psychological services. And then the last point I'll speak under wellness, it's really a continuation to improve and refine our health program. So as I mentioned, we really want to integrate all of our wellness and health posturing into all aspects of both sworn and civilian life here in S P S. It's very, very important. We don't build things, we don't sell things, we provide a very important service to the community. We enhance community wellness, we are there to apprehend criminals and we're there to fight crime. So our people are our most important asset, and that's why we're focused so much on all this and having all this permeate sort of all of the things that we do here at S P S. That ends my presentation, Chief. Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy. I'll take the next one, priority two, please. Slide. In speaking about our organization, the first subtext there is policing excellence. And you've heard me speak about it before, but we, we aspire to be a top-tier policing organization across Canada. One of the advantages we have is that being brand new, we can build in right from the start programs that are up at the top tier of policing, if not in Canada, even maybe in North America. And one of the reasons I say that is because we have 28 different organizations here, and there's so many good ideas that people bring forward to us. One of the things that sort of straddles what Todd talked about and what Mike will talk about is our community programs. We took over about 70 community programs from our colleagues, the R C M P, and we did an assessment of those programs, and many of them are really top-notch. A few of them we went through and we went back to the community and how would they like to see that evolve? And we listened to them and we evolved a couple of those programs. So we are doing well in that regard. I want to make a few comments about technology, and I'll start with body worn cameras. I'm a big proponent of body worn cameras. I anticipate that they will foster pub, public trust. I think they provide evidence and I think it's an excellent accountability tool. And we look towards the fall, perhaps late fall, to run a pilot project, and that would entail probably about 15 body worn cameras for a project of six months. I think that's very progressive and many other agencies, of course, in Canada have already gone down that road. Number two is the drones, and we have a number of them already, and they are being utilized for a number of investigative reasons, but also to find lost children or, or lost adults, and also I think for large events that we in fact used it for the first time at the Saki Parade. It was very helpful to monitor the crowd. The third thing I want to mention about technology is in our detention facilities, we're testing out some new technology that actually measures the heart rate of the individuals that are in the individual cells. And that is a very good safety tool because we do monitor the individual cells on a 15-minute basis, but now we actually have technology that's capable of doing that, breathing, looking at and watching the heart rate that's monitored by the central console. Now about deployment of employees, we of course have been P O J since November 29th. We are in Wally and Newton, and we look forward to taking over the west side of South Surrey in late July and then the east side of South Surrey in late November. And we are well positioned for that, both from a recruiting perspective and also a training perspective. I'll stop there and hand it over to Deputy Lassage. We'll talk about the third priority, and that is our community.
Afternoon, everyone. Community engagement, I know we've talked before, we've had a number of different community engagements where we've actually gone out, engaged the community both through town halls, through mail-in surveys. And what we've done, we've taken all those findings of the community consultation and they've helped, they've helped us shape our, our new strategy. As S P S has gone through, you know, we're also in district, we have a district inspector in charge of each district or area. It's a new, it's new for Surrey, so in that way we have a district inspector. So every, I have an inspector, districts four and five will share an inspector for now, but those district inspectors have engaged in a number of different district stakeholders to identify priorities and strategies. We are revising the community meetings to better serve individual districts. You know, what's, what happens in Wally is not necessarily what hap, the way things work in Newton. So that's why I say we're, we're keen to that. So we want to make sure that the strategies and the engagement is different for each district. You know, these meetings have become more action-oriented and structured, new terms of reference have been developed, stakeholder analysis has been conducted, and they got future meetings planned. And with all of this, you know, we've developed a comstat dashboard, you know, which tracks 28-day crime stacks, crime statistics per district. So that officer inspector is able to see those crime trends and he's able to move or allocate resources to, to deal with a lot of those, the different trends. You know, our staff is also, you know, they're conducting research, as the chief mentioned, from 28 different agencies, but in our staff, they've conducted research over a number of different police agencies in Canada and worked with community stakeholders, you know, on addressing, you know, addressing nuisance and loitering type incidents proactively because I know that's what we spend a lot of our time with, people that, moving people along the unhoused. So we've, we've gone, did a scan across, we're looking at how different agencies are doing it, and we're actually coming, we're going to come up with a plan as to how we best take on a lot of that, those issues. You know, we're also chairing the Surrey outreach team, weekly meetings, which include various city and community partners. We've, we've liaised external agencies to identify best practices. We're revising some of these meetings, both the meetings and the structure and the objectives to become more action-oriented. And as the chief mentioned earlier, he talked about the community programs, we inherited a number of community programs. So in there, we've, we've conducted a full gap analysis on all these community-based programs delivered in Surrey. We've compared them with crime trends, community consultation, discussions with other agencies and research. Various programs, you know, we've improved the number of them, we've changed some of them, and some of the, and we've developed some new programs as a result. And like I say, an example of that is the newcomer strategy. It's, you know, we've, that's been clear throughout that. And when we talk about priorities, the second bullet, you know, S P S, we have a representative on the city of Surrey, Community Safety and Well-Being Working Group, as well as the district action tables. You know, they're currently being reorganized with an improved focus. The district tables are a community-based and shared, they're community-based and shared objectives and priorities and have the, they all have links to the community, to the city's community safety and well-being priorities. So we're linked right with the, we're trying to link right in with the city's priorities on those. And that's the end of my presentation.
So to conclude, Mr. Chair, we're well on our way to meeting our targets pertaining to the strategic plan. I recognize that we have now a new board, and as we go into the fall, some of these targets may be adjusted or some of these programs may be adjusted, and we're very flexible that way in developing something new or augmenting the plan as it stands now. And then I look forward to the fall where we have to collectively put together a plan for 2026 and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for that. Directors, any comments or questions? Director Bates?
Chief, have we started that campaign for, to pursue our C N P officers?
Yes.
Any, anybody?
Yes. I'll let Deputy Matsumoto speak to it, but overall, we've increased the, I'll say, the number of hits or inquiries. Deputy?
Yeah, I think I'll just echo what the chief said. We've had a number of inquiries. We were talking to a number of potential candidates from various agencies across British Columbia, and only being two days out of the gate, I think we'll update numbers next week or...
Can you please, updating us?
Yes.
You've had lots of interest.
And the second thing is this newcomers program. So what is happening so far? What is the program so far? Do we have anything found out?
Yes, we're just in the stages of putting it together. We will be coming back to the board and discussing it with the board with your input. We've discussed it amongst ourselves, we've reached out to the community a little bit, and now we got to come back and we'll present before the board, and we encourage your dialogue on this.
Yeah. Director Keeman?
There's a quick question about, I think it was Deputy Lassage, you, you talked about district inspectors, or five would be combined?
Yeah.
Is that just because we're not taking over the entire district and we're doing it half? And so by the time we take over in November, we're going to have...
A lot of it's based on the, the amount of calls per those, those districts. So when we look at the difference, District one and three are very, Districts one and three are about, I think they're about 58% of the call volume in the entire city. So it's based on, we're basing it on the amount of files in those two areas for now. And like I say, I think the, we've, we've, we've put four and five together for now until we can actually get there, assess, and if there's a need to actually split them, we're open to that and we'll come back with a plan. Okay, thank you.
Nobody else? Thank you very much for your presentation, update on the strategic plan. Look forward to hearing what is more come, and we'll go from there. There are no delegation requests. E was consent items, there were three consent items that we approved through the approval of the agenda. F, moving into reports, I will turn that over to Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since our last meeting, it's been extremely busy for the men and women on the front line and here in headquarters, supporting all the frontline and also the investigative areas. But I can tell you that we're, we're right on track and there's been some great work done by S P S police officers. You may have seen that there was a fire overnight and three of S P S members went in and assisted some people in leaving and so forth. I spoke to those members this morning and I congratulated them. I also want to inform the board that there is an organization called the International Association of Chiefs of Police. It's a worldwide organization, and every year they take in submissions. They call it the top 40, under 40, which is to say that they take in submissions and then they pick who are the up-and-comers in policing across the world that are under 40 years of age, and they pick 40 of them. We have one of our individuals that now have been successful in that, we were just notified last week, and that individual will be going to the National Conference in the fall in, in the U S. And so that's, that's a great feather in our cap and an outstanding member of the Surrey Police Service. Finally, I'll mention that, and Deputy Matsumoto talked about it, the hiring so far this year, our budget is for 140 police officers, and that is 85 experienced officers, 55 recruits. And so far this year, we are right on track, maybe even a little bit ahead. So hopefully we can sustain that, and as we plan out to really look towards concluding the transition as soon as possible, and I think everybody is looking forward to that, the community, the R C M P and S P S, but we want to do it safely and we have to thoughtically to ensure that nothing falls through the gaps. That is my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the directors?
Congratulations to the officer that was chosen.
Fantastic. Thank you.
No any questions or comments? Thank you very much for your update. We'll move along. Committee reports, we have three committee reports coming under the finance committee, so I will turn that over to Director Palmer.
Thank you. The first one being the board procurement and delegation of signing authority policy, F, Fin 010. The board current, the board's current procurement and delegation of signing authority was created during the initial stages of the transition. Purpose of the policy is to be nimble between board meetings by authorizing designated individuals to procure goods and services that have been budgeted. During the startup phase of the organization, the board understood that some big-ticket items would need to be procured, and the amounts delegated were higher than what that would, than what normally, sorry, ordinarily would be for the board to consider. The policy itself refers to it being an interim policy. Now that S P S is police of jurisdiction, the finance committee is recommending revisions to, for a permanent policy. Individuals who are authorized under the proposed policy are the same, the chair of the finance committee and the executive director. What is new is that the proposed policy caps what the, what the chair of finance committee is authorized to spend without coming to the board. From an unlimited amount to $100,000 for competitive offers, $50,000 for legal and consulting services without competition, and $5,000 for any other goods and services without competition. Proposed policy also lowers the delegated authority of the executive director from $100,000 to $10,000 for competitive offers and $5,000 for direct awards. These amounts are in line with the policies of other police boards. Proposed policy has also, sorry, the proposed policy also has a requirement that the chair of finance report all new procurements using the delegated authority at the next meeting of the finance committee and the subsequent meeting of the board. Finance committee recommends the board approve the resolution found in the agenda package, repealing the interim policy and replacing it with the policy set on page 31 and, on pages 31 of the agenda package. Page 29.
Resolution is on page 30, but the policy that you're referring to is on pages 31.
Yeah. Any questions, concerns, online?
Christine's online. Any comments, questions, note to this first item? All in favor? Post? Thank you.
Thank you.
Continuing on to number two.
Travel and expense authorization and reimbursement policy. The currently for travel and expense authorization and reimbursement of board, of board directors, the board's manual, the board manual references S P S policy. It should be noted that S P S policy mirrors the city of Surrey policy with some minor exceptions. Issue of, with adhering to S P S or city of Surrey policy is that managers in those organizations oversee approvals and procedures for reimbursement. Purpose of the proposed policy is to address this gap. The standalone policy for set, or set of rules for the board not only provides greater clarity for travelers, but in, but it enhances transparency and trust in the board and, and its prudent and respectful use of public resources. Under the policy, travel for conferences requires pre-approval through a board resolution. Business-related expenses of directors and board employees will continue to be administered by board staff. Any disputed expenses or exceptions to the policy may be reviewed by the finance committee, which may authorize expense. Meals are not eligible free for reimbursement, as with the city of Surrey and S P S. Meals are covered by per diems at the same rates as the, as for S P S executives. Violent claims are also at the same rate as S P S executives. The finance committee will conduct period audits, both to confirm compliance and make recommendations through the board if the rules or procedures need to be changed. Any questions? Fine?
No questions? Then we can put that on the table, all in favor? Post? Thank you. Continuing on to number three.
Three, finance.
Awesome. Slow down.
Terms of reference amendment. So enterprise risk management is a core area of board oversight. Currently, the board manual sets out roles for the board and the finance committee with risk, to risk oversight. While the board has ultimate responsibility, approving the development of S P S's into enterprise risk management program is impractical and not the best use of the board's time to be the hands-on work that is required to create risk appetite statement and work with the chief constable on risk matrix and mitigation plans. The finance committee currently has responsibilities for overseeing financial risks and understanding operational risks that require adequate insurance. that is required to create risk appetite statement and work with the chief constable on risk matrix and mitigation plans. The finance committee currently has responsibilities for overseeing financial risks and understanding operational risks that require adequate insurance. The finance committee recommends that the board delegate the board's work-related responsibilities to the committee, with the board still being the sole authority for approving what is developed and recommended by the committee. This follows the same approach of required proposals be worked on or reviewed by a committee before it is added to a board agenda. It requires updating the finance committee's terms of reference. Actual changes are under the risk management heading on page fifty. What is new, a redline version can be found on page forty-six of the agenda package. Committee is recommending that the board approve amended terms of reference as set on pages forty-seven through fifty in the agenda package. Any questions? Concerns?
You're moving there. Move second, all in favor? Post. Thank you. All right, we're hustling today. We can smell your food. Moving along to G, there's no information to be shared today. H is correspondence and I will turn that over to Jason.
No, I think it was just to report the correspondence itself. So I think there's nothing to add.
Oh, response to the letter in the meeting we had the meeting the other week or last, earlier this week. Moving along to I, service or policy complaints again.
Yeah, simply again, previous meetings the board had passed resolutions to address the service or policy complaints received at the beginning of this year and one that carried over from last year. And subsequent to that, when we recorded that back to the complainants, they have a window of opportunity if they disagree with that outcome to ask the OPCC to write us and say they want a further review. The period has passed, the OPCC wrote us saying that it hasn't received any requests. And so officially closed those files. And so this is just a report back to the board that those files can now be closed.
Thank you. Moving along to J, we are hustling, no new business. Again, the public, we have no public here today. At our next meeting time, our next meeting time will be July tenth, back here in this boardroom here at headquarters. And without it, I'd like to hold a motion to move into closed. All in favor? Post. Thank you very much. We'll move into close.